Good evening and welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting for November 12th, 2018. If you've been waiting for us to come on for seven o'clock, we were a little delayed. We had a special meeting and we're ready to go now. This is our Committee of the Whole meeting, so if you are looking to hear a lot of questions and more in-depth discussion, this is the meeting that you should tune into. For any of you who are in the audience and maybe want to pick up an agenda, you can pick one up outside the door and follow along with us. If you're watching at home, you can tune into lavonypublicschools.org, highlight over the Board tab, and you'll see the agendas and you'll be able to follow along with us. With that, we'll start with Item One, Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips. Is there anyone who wants to address the Board tonight? Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we'll move on to Item Two, Committee of the Whole. I do not have anything. Mrs. Oakley, do you have anything?
We do not, President Johnson.
Very well. That'll take us to Item Three, Building in Sight, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Centers.
Thank you, President Johnson. So this evening, we have three items. Mr. Francis is making his way up here. The first item, Letter A, is the Third Quarter Dashboard Report. And joining him will be Mr. Smith from Plant Moran Cressa.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I forgot my sheet back on my desk. Mr. Scott Smith is, we asked him to join us this evening so he could go through the Third Quarter Dashboard Report with the Board this evening. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Smith, and he will walk you through his presentation, which I think you have in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Yes, this is our Third Quarter Report, so it's going to take us through September 30th of 2018 on the cash flow finances. That would be the lower center portion of the dashboard. We were just here last month doing Quarter Two, so the upper middle section of that will only be time adjusted by about one month. Those were through, I think, October 2nd prior. So not a lot of changes on that, but certainly on the lower middle portion, we've seen a large adjustment in cost, particularly because of the summer construction and all the expenditures associated with that. So focusing on that upper middle portion, our current budget remained almost the same. It did come down by 1,000. We were able to kind of close out the Garfield project. There was $1,000 remaining in that budget. After all the costs came in, that came back out. So our current budget is the $202,326,890. Again, $1,000 less than before. Our current commitments stayed approximately the same. Our actuals paid are up about 1 and 1/4 million, and correspondingly, our actual cost to complete came down about the same. In terms of our three-month schedule, we're wrapping up or working through finally the bond projects from this past summer, including Churchill High School. We expect that to be ongoing through the end of this calendar year. Nigiru Elementary work will be presenting later. The DD presentation tonight, we're still currently in design. We'll be finishing that up really at the end of this month and going out to bid in early December. And then we'll be back here in January to do the, to recommend the bids and get your, try to get your approvals to move that project forward. The sinking fund work is already in full swing. The pavement projects, we are pretty much wrapped up with Bid PAC One. We'll be putting that out on the streets as early as this week. As we do that, we'll roll into the design for Bid PAC Two, which is the remainder of the schools. We'll probably be in here in December for the Bid PAC One recommendations, but the Bid PAC Two stuff will be probably in March for those. We'll be starting those bids in February. The roofing replacement work, which is Johnson Upper Elementary for next summer, that work is currently out on the streets, out for bid, and we will be presenting those on the December series of Board meetings. And probably third in line here is the athletic fields. We're finalizing the design for those. We probably will be on the streets, may not be this week, but maybe next week, and those will be taking bids early December. We shifted those out a little bit. We don't want to have all the bids due at the same time. So originally, we had hoped to award those or recommend and award those in December. We're going to push that out into January now. We'll still bid the work early. We'll have the results. We're just going to shift it to a time where we can all focus a little bit more and make sure we get all the questions answered for those. Critical project issues, this would be the lower left-hand corner of that. We're currently under construction. You may not have seen it because it kind of hides in the back of the schools, but we're currently under construction for some of the dugout work. That probably will run through this month. It'll probably be into December. We're still trying to obtain the permit for some of the work at Churchill portion of that. The state has to review those. The state views the dugout as a structure, and therefore, it requires a permit despite that it's not continuously inhabited by students. It is-
Or completely closed.
Or completely closed, but that is how they view those, and it does require a building permit. So we're trying to expedite the review of that. We are working again to close out the projects from this summer, working on Nigiru. We're going to submit the permit reviews for that as well, the end of this month after Thanksgiving, so we'll get that in timeline early so that the, the state has ample time to review the drawings and get us any kind of comments well before the projects are required to start. We'll also be bidding the abatement work that's associated with Nigiru. It is not a huge package. It predominantly is flooring, for the most part, and also some exterior doors with the caulking and such as asbestos containing. So that'll be bid out as well. We'll either be here in December or January with that one, most likely January. We are in the process of negotiating commissioning and security work for the Nigiru project as well. And as I stated before, the design, the bids, and the awards for all the other sinking fund projects for this summer. Jumping over to the lower middle of that portion of the dashboard, really focusing on the Series Two, our actual paid out of Series Two are almost $73 million. That's a jump of nearly $17 million from Quarter Two as of June 30th. So again, a lot of that is just all the work that occurred over the summer. One thing you will note is at the bottom, there's a variance. This is Plant Moran Cressa's reconciliation with LPS's finances. Typically, this is zero. Here, we have a small variance of $1,549. I guess it just goes to prove the point of why we do the exercises. We've identified the small difference. We're working with Allison and her team to do it. It's just one invoice that got paid out of a different fund, so we're in the process of reconciling that with them, and we'll have that back down to zero for the next time.
It is a good check and balance-
Yeah.
-to two systems coming through $72 million-
For sure.
...to identify a lower $1,000 variance and then find where that is-
Right.
-really is, yeah, important.
And then, again, just the phasing schedule. This really, I won't spend much time with it because I think it warrants a quicker or a longer discussion when we go through our presentation, taking you through the start of the projects back in 2014, working through this past summer, and then now fast-forwarding into the next summer's work. This just is kind of a matrix of the number of buildings we've done and during which years they've been completed. And a little note as well, showing you which buildings were renovated in those calendar years, with the, with the high schools really kind of being a two-summer type of engagement. That's our presentation. Can I answer any questions or is there any discussion on the dashboard?
Questions?
Just more of a comment, and I mentioned this to you. We've mentioned it in the past, but it bears mentioning again, and I said it right before our meeting began. Speaking personally for myself, I cannot thank Plant Moran Cressa enough for the work that you folks have done with us through the bond. It's a little bit strange that we're nearing the end of the bond work right now, especially for so many of us who have been there since before it actually got approved by our voters. But I cannot speak more highly of the responsibility and the workmanship that Plant Moran Cressa has offered Livonia Public Schools. We are educators. We are not construction managers. And to take on this amount of work, we feel, I feel, I will speak for myself, I feel very comfortable knowing that you folks have been overseeing this every step of the way. There have been so many times throughout this past five years where we have realized cost savings based on your advice or based on economies of scale that you have been able to bring to our attention, and I absolutely believe that we could not have done this work this well or this financially efficiently had you not been our partner, and I'm so grateful that you are.
I concur. Anyone else? Questions?
I think it's a 7-0 vote.
I agree.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us.
Nothing needed for the, for the regular meeting. This is just a presentation. I'd like to invite up Katie Metefsky, Metefsko from French Associates for the next presentation.
Oh, thank you.
I think all of you know Katie. She's been the architect for several years through the bond.
Extraordinary.
Yes. She didn't wear her cape tonight. I don't know. She has been responsible for elementaries and then most, even most recently Churchill and the Career Center, along with our final buildings. And Katie has been working as, through French Associates, with the district now on the drawings for Nigiru, which is the Summer of '19 bond program. And as you all know, and as the folks at home very likely know, the last from the 2013 bond to be, building to be renovated. So we're, we've been very excited. It's a far cry from a year ago at this time, when we had five buildings juggling around and going through all those meetings, and after we were done exhausting all the questions and et cetera for a building, saying, "Okay, next," and then we opened up another building and started talking about it. So this has been a good process, and right now, what we're going to do is, I think it's going to be somewhat of a joint effort with, I think Katie taking the lead on the presentation for the Board members. It's on the screen here for you, and I believe we have it as well for the folks at home, load it up via PowerPoint. So I'll let you guys take it away.
Scott is going to start with everything else. I'll just do Nigiru when it comes.
Yep, and part of it, what Scott's going to do is give you some of the backdrop, as he had mentioned at the end of the quarterly dashboard, just sort of take that perspective of, this is where we were, and this is what we've accomplished, and this is where we are now. So, thank you.
Yes, and I think, I believe this is playing, for those of you tuning in at home, and for those here, will be referred to the PowerPoint here on the screen. But this is a slideshow that we've done pretty much over the years, so the format you'll remember is very similar. We've updated it for content based on progress to date, and, you know, again, as it pertains to next year's Project Nigiru. Again, sadly, and maybe not so sadly, but bittersweet, this is really probably the last time we'll be doing a presentation for the 2013 bond. So I'd like to spend a little bit of time, this is going to be year six next year, and, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of new community members. Maybe it's important to step back and see where we've started, where we've gone, what the goals were. And then, again, I'll let Katie talk about Nigiru Elementary and what's in store for that school next summer. So really, there's three agenda points. We're going to go over the overview of the original bond. We're going to talk about progress to date, the first five years, and for the most part, Katie will lead us in the project overview for 2019, which again is Nigiru Elementary. So again, back in May of 2013, the community went out for a $195, $195 million vote, critical upgrades, technology improvements, the fact that our buildings were older, dated, and required some reinvestment in them. We also took advantage of favorable interest rates at the time, of, again, trying to enhance safety throughout the school, reduce maintenance and energy costs, and equity among the buildings was a theme that has played out throughout the, throughout the process. Again, $195 million, 30-year millage, and a projected average millage rate of 2.0 mills over the life of that bond. That $195 million was roughly broken down as per this, the bulk of it being facility improvements, probably about 3/4 of that being dedicated to facility improvements, 30-plus million in IT, 5.9 million in new buses and equipment, furniture and instructional equipment. Those are things we've implemented throughout. And again, about $4 million in closing and other costs. As we mentioned in the dashboard report, that number's grown up a little bit to just over $202 million now, through some other augmentations through sinking fund and such, as we've stated in the past. The scope of the work for information technology, this was classroom technology, mobile learning devices, new computers, upgrades to the wireless networks, new phone systems, new printers and copiers throughout the district, servers, infrastructure, surveillance cameras, all new technology cabling throughout the, throughout the buildings. Each building's been equipped with a community room. Facility improvements, marker boards, tack boards, new ceilings, flooring and paint throughout, cosmetic refresh. We significantly changed the heating and ventilation systems throughout the district, increasing efficiency, increasing the distribution of heat to the, to the space, not just through a horizontal unit ventilator, but through a vertical unit ventilator that distributes ductwork to different parts of the classroom. New power, new lighting. We've re-secured, we've done the secure vestibule entrances, which is a combination of architectural as well as security features. Most of the buildings had old single-pane windows. Those have been replaced with new energy-efficient windows, new doors and hardware, upgraded restrooms, again, heating and ventilating system, temperature controls. For those that don't know, that's, that's a way to, to control the heating and HVAC remotely, so you don't have to go to that specific part of the building all the time and manually dial something up or down. Those at the district can see what's going on with those pieces of equipment remotely via computer and control them as well. We've updated the fire alarm in the system, put new emergency generators on all the buildings, and of course, significantly reduced the amount of abatement, asbestos-containing materials in the building over this time. Buses and equipment, that was, again, mostly buses, but we've also, through facilities, have purchased new equipment for maintenance. About two years ago, we upgraded all out of the classroom furniture, starting in the secondaries and then progressing into the elementary schools. New office furniture, some science equipment. We've purchased musical instruments throughout the duration of the bond, and then closing and other costs as well. Now I'd like to jump into- Jumping over to progress to date, the bond was sold over a series of, two series, first one being in 2013 and the second being in 2016. Early on, we engaged Wakeley Associates. They did a book of standards that, and the book of standards is really what does the district want from their facilities so that we can use it. At the time, we had two different architects. It was important that both architects were implementing the same standards in their, in their thing, so we didn't end up with inequality amongst the buildings. We assembled the bond team, again, consisting originally of StanTech and French Associates. For the last couple of years, it's really been just Katie and her team from French. Barton Mallow Technologies on the IT side, George Ock, who remains with us today. Early on, we had Barton Mallow and McCarthy and Smith helping us with different facilities. Selinger Associates has been helping us with commissioning. Nova Environmental, as well as Arch Environmental. Those are our environmental consultants and help us with the abatement work. Program verification. So at the time, lots of different committees were formed throughout the district to kind of handle all the different assets of this large bond program. Lots of meetings were held, lots of good discussion was had. Those experiences were shared, and from that, and scopes of work were developed and implemented throughout the different buildings. Board and public accountability. We've had monthly committee meeting updates. We have award recommendation meetings. Board updates are posted to the LPS website, and as, every three months, we've been doing the quarterly dashboards again as a transparency measure to show that the Board and the community where we're at and just kind of show progress to date for all those items. So back in 2014 was really our first year where we kicked some things off. So again, we had McCarthy and Smith, and we had French Associates doing the elementary schools, which consisted of Cleveland, Coolidge, and Rosedale, Barton Mallow, and SHW, later StanTech after the change of ownership. They designed Cooper and Frost. We did the three high school press boxes as well. Abatement, information technology consisting of structured cabling, wireless electronics and networks, phone systems, and the PA and sound field systems within the classrooms, and again, security and move management. Year Two consisted of, of the same project teams. So at the elementary level, that was Hayes, Roosevelt, and Kennedy. At the middle school and upper elementary, Riley Upper Elementary and Emerson Middle School. And we really started Phase One of Franklin High School, getting the auditorium area started in the first summer's work. Abatement, entryways, again, those are part of the standard design progress or process starting in Year Two. Those were not added originally in the first year, but continually added thereafter as part of the projects. In Year Two, from the information technology side, it was similar, except we added some new computers and classroom projection systems, surveillance managed, surveillance systems as well as move management and security as well. 2016, which is Year Three, again, this will be the last year where we really had the same teams, where we were working with three CMs with two construction managers, I'm sorry, three construction managers, two architectural design firms. Grant Hoover and Randolph Elementaries, Johnson Upper Elementary, Holmes Middle School. We wrapped up Franklin High School and started Stevenson High School. Abatement, information technology, again, new computers, new classroom projection systems. And in 2016, we really started our secondary student furniture replacement program. 2017, we completed Stevenson in Phase Two, and at this point, we're starting to ramp down a little bit with the, with the scope of work. So at this point, McCarthy and Smith and Barton Mallow finished up their last projects. George Ock is retained to start those, to finish up their projects and take on Churchill High School and some of the odds and ends projects that got done over the summer, including Garfield Community School. French Associates comes in. They had predominantly been doing elementary school work. They've now taken over Churchill High School and, again, been selected as the architect to move forward on the bond projects. So again, we wrapped up Stevenson. We started Churchill High School. We completed some miscellaneous summer projects at Randolph, Frost, Cooper, and at the great, the GSRP program over at Garfield. Starting that fall, we jumped in and renovated Garfield Community School in anticipation for the transition over there, which started at the beginning of their second semester. From the IT side, we've implemented some mobile devices that year and also done the elementary school furniture in 2017. Year Five, this past summer, we wrapped up Churchill High School. We also did Buchanan Elementary, Webster Elementary, the Livonia Career Technical Center, Jackson Early Childhood Center. We completed entryway elements at all those schools. In addition, we completed them at Nigiru Elementary, the administration building, as well as Garfield and Churchill. From an IT standpoint, we had all the same general upgrades that go along with any building renovation, but we also did new Chromebooks. They upgraded the wireless access points throughout, and we started and will be complete, I think by the end of this year, the digital signage displays in most of the buildings. Another focal point has been the new playgrounds this past summer, which I've heard nothing but really good things about. The community seems to be really enjoying. When you drive by, there seems to be no shortage of people on them.
That's good.
Which really brings us into 2019. Nigiru Elementary. This is a project that was not originally part of the bond's scope. Through some savings that have been realized over the life of the bond here, there's been an opportunity to renovate one of the existing buildings that, again, wasn't originally planned for. So in the process, we've been working on the fire alarm and temperature controls. As you know, we had a five-year pre-purchasing agreement with those particular vendors that expired at the end of '18. For the most part, really, the fire alarm would be, and the temperature controls are the things that we're looking at implementing at Nigiru. We're not replacing all the mechanical systems there, so we won't be utilizing the unit control, unit ventilator vendor. So really, it's mostly fire alarm. The temperature control scope is going to be reduced there as well, due to the fact that we're not renovating the entire mechanical scope. So we're working on those. We're also in negotiations, again, with Selinger Associates, who's our commissioning agent, and also Security Designs, who will be, has been doing the security and access control work throughout the district over the last five years.
Can I ask a question? Can we just clarify? Because as you mentioned in the beginning, there's probably a lot of new people in the district. Why Nigiru was not originally part of the bond's scope?
Well, at the time, and when we first started that, Nigiru was not one of our elementary schools. It was a magnet program housed within one of our schools, and we were the charter authorizer for that school. But at the time, in 2011, 2012, as we were planning for the bond and completed the long-term facility plan for the district, that was not a school utilized as one of Livonia's K-12 or pre-K, post-secondary programs. So since that time, we have opened Nigiru as our own elementary school. That program has continued to grow, and again, as Mr. Smith mentioned, certainly with the savings that we've realized throughout the past five years in the bond process, we did have remaining dollars that the Board then chose to put toward this project.
So next is really kind of our timeline, and this really is how a typical project would be structured from start to be, to finish. It all starts with the programming and the scope verification. If you'll recall, we've had several meetings with you guys. We presented kind of a A, B, and C list of ways we could approach Nigiru and kind of got to a point where we thought, we knew what, which direction the district wanted to go. So from there, we started with our schematic design. We've had lots of meetings. We've had committee meetings. At that point, French Associates would produce a progress set of drawings. It's still early on. It would have the scope on there in roundabout fashion, and we would estimate that George Ock would engage their pre-construction folks. They would produce an estimate. It's your first check really to see how we're doing relative to the budget we set forth. In this case, got a good first initial read on the SD level, and while that's occurring, Katie and her team is continuing to draw, and they progress into what's called DD, or Design Development. A little further refinement of the drawings, you know, you're looking at 50 to 75% complete. In this case, we were probably 75% complete at the DD level, which is great news for the pre-construction team. There's more to estimate. You can get a better handle on what the total costs are. So again, another round of meetings, lots of discussion, trying to, trying to dive into some of the finer points and iron out some of those, those details so that they don't become changes or over scopes or under scopes when the drawings actually go out for bid. or over scopes or under scopes when the drawings actually go out for bid. And we'll touch on this later. At that level, at that point, we had another estimate, our DD estimate, which I will go into later, which brings us to tonight. We're looking to share that information with you, both in terms of the scope of the work, which Katie will present. I'll touch on where we're at with estimate and at that point, you know, we'd like to get questions or comments. If there are things we need to consider, we will. This is really the time to do that, but we'd also look for your approval to continue moving forward and moving forward that deadline to the end of the month to kind of get things ironed up and out for bid, which is where Katie's at right now, wrapping up her CD documents over the next couple of weeks. Again, rolling out to bid and coming back to you folks in January to present those. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Katie Matewski from French and she's going to take you through the scope of work and...
The first slide that you can see is actually the entry archway that's already done this summer and it looks very nice. We had most of the time, the entry archway is right in front of the school, but here was a little bit exceptional because there is not much room between the entry canopy and the driveway, so we put it on the other side, but when you go by, you see it really nice. So it stands really good. Now, the second slide is what we are doing, that is the composite floor plan. So I want to say, this is a very unusual school. When we got in there first time, it is kind of open concept. The whole media center is totally open. The classrooms are open. Right now, there is a workroom between the classrooms that has no door, no wall, so you go from there into the classroom. From the corridor to most of the classroom, there is just an accordion partition, not per se a wall, not a door. So totally open concept. Just because of that, the flooring is all carpet, so the acoustics is a little bit better. To walking and talking to the district, to the teachers, there was a wish to kind of isolate the classrooms a little bit better from the corridor. So in order to do that, I had to contact the state and ask what is the best way to go about it. So the portion where the corridor and the classroom were divided with accordion partition, like it was probably about seven foot long an accordion partition, we're building a gypsum board wall and putting a door. But the portion where the workroom is between the classroom still stays open, so there is still a flaw and that was accepted by the state. So there was a go-ahead that we can continue that way. What we are closing is, because usually the corridor and the classrooms have to be one hour rated, so what we are doing is one hour rated. So we're actually improving and bettering what it is now, so that's why they accepted that we continue with that plan. Also, between the classrooms, there was no wall, but movable partitions. Some were kind of movable partitions, some were accordion doors again. We are removing those and we're putting a gypsum board wall, but with a door that goes from one classroom to another. So there's still connection, but the acoustics will be better, so you're not going to hear one teacher talk to the other, or the students from the other classroom. So that will be quite a bit of improvement. For all the classrooms, we're replacing the flooring again and it is carpet, just because of acoustic, because it's still not totally open concept, it's kind of open concept. So we are putting the carpet. We're putting new ceiling tile that is, has a lot of acoustical value. We're putting new lights, new LED lights, because per code now, you cannot do anything else but LED lights and they're dimmable, so they will have much better value. The casework is pretty in a good condition, so we're replacing only the countertops. We're not doing a full mechanical renovation of Nigieiro. The heating unit vents horizontal stay as they are, just like Garfield. The renovation that we did at Garfield, that's what we are doing here, so later on, they could be replaced if wished. Mechanically, we're replacing only some of the bigger units and we're putting new rooftop unit for the office, but not total mechanical renovation. The classroom, all the classrooms have going outside, exit to outside through an alcove that right now has exterior door that is, most of the doors are hollow metal and are in a very bad shape, they're rusted. So we have an alternate to replace all the exterior hollow metal doors and frames with new aluminum framing and new glazing. Those alcoves right now have, some of them have lockers that are taken from another school put there, some have only hooks. So we're replacing, because they need lockers, so we're putting new lockers. And those alcoves have walk-up carpets, so when the kids come from outside, they go on the walk-up carpet first and they go into the classroom. So that is quite an improvement in the classrooms. Not all the classrooms have sinks, there are only four classrooms that have sinks. We're replacing all the sinks and putting just a little bit of vinyl tile in front of the sinks, so the carpet doesn't get wet. The media center is still open as it was open before. We're replacing the total, the carpet in the media center and the corridors and we're replacing the lights. The lights will be newer lights, they're T-12s now, so there will be new lights, the lighting will be much better. The bathrooms, we usually did bathrooms, like the two-gang bathrooms, totally renovation, but here, the bathrooms are in pretty good shape. The tile is really good, so what we are doing is only painting, replacing the plumbing fixtures and replacing the toilet partitions and accessories. So the bathrooms will look like new, but we didn't have to do as extensive work as in the other schools. This school is called a, like a rainbow school from what the teachers told me. So there is one set of drinking fountains up front in the lobby that has like a big backsplash and they wanted to put some kind of reminder of that rainbow touch for the school. So we're putting glass wall tile, it's one by one inch, in eight different colors that the teachers chose, very nice color, so it will be a blend of glass tile going all the way down to the floor and then you'll have the drinking fountains with bottle filler. So that will be a nice touch. Also, in the lobby, when you come in, right now, there is like a bench, which is brown bench, and it has a display case that is kind of broken, not usable, so we're going to remove that display case and put the same tile, glass tile in that portion where the display case was. So you'll see, when you come in, you'll see that rainbow feel to the school. So those are the two very nice tiles that I think you're going to like it, the blend is very nice. We're also doing a secure vestibule, just like all the other schools. This secure vestibule is very similar to Buchanan, if somebody went to Buchanan, because when you come in, on the right-hand side is going to the gym. So we're putting a wall there, so we can secure the vestibule, but from the gym, the students can come into the main office without any problem. From the vestibule, they cannot go in unless somebody has a key, which would be the teachers'. But there is another entry to the gym, so we're good. The main office, that is the blue there, we're replacing, again, lights, ceiling, new carpet, new casework. We have two new desks, one for the secretary, one just like countertop when you come in, and new cabinets for the principal's office, because there was nothing, there was totally empty. So the whole main office gets kind of a facelift, if you want to say that. We did have a meeting, well, let me see, the music room at the end, you see that kind of diagonal, that used to be an art room, now it's turned to a music room, it stays as a music room. So we're going to put, right now, it has vinyl tile, we're putting carpet, because that's what it's supposed to be for a music room, and we're putting acoustical value different ceiling tiles. The social room, that is kind of hatched there, that used to be, that used to be a music room at one point and had like the floor is set down, so we're covering that total. That's actually a place where the PTA meets, they have meeting, they have a lot of activity together, so we're putting new carpet, again, facelift for that room too, quite a bit. The gym has, right now, there is a partition in the middle that we will demo, because they're not using it, and we're going to put just a little bit of storage room where that alcove for the partition to come in was, so that they're getting a new storage room. It gets painted, the visity tile is in a good shape, so we're not replacing it, we're painting it, there is an accent stripe, and then the deck, we cannot paint, because it is acoustical deck, so it will lose its value, but there are still beams that will get an accent color, so there will be splash of color in there. We did meet with, with the staff to choose the colors, that was last week?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, and they did choose one carpet for all the classrooms and a different carpet for all the media center, the corridors and the main office. The colors are mainly, they go bluish, bluish, yellowish, it's a very nice, very nice color that they chose. We're going to paint the entire school, paint the frames, paint the hollow metal doors, have some accent paints, basically. That's the extent, and we're going to paint the exterior, there are a lot of overhangs in front of the doors, so we're going to paint those overhangs. And I, from mechanical, except those bigger units, there's some exhaust fans, and there are in five classrooms, ceiling unit fans that are kind of in a, they're still working, but they're not in the best shape, so we have an alternate to replace them if the money allows that. Those are only five classrooms. And electrically, we do have new wireless clocks like any place, we have a new fire alarm system, we do have a new generator outside. So basically, any improvement that we did at the other schools, we're doing it here. Oh yes, we do, the wall that we're building between the classrooms that used to be partition wall, that's now, it is the new teaching wall that has a different paint and we're putting marker board on that teaching wall. On the other walls where they had chalkboards and tagboards, we're putting just tagboards to replace those, because if you eliminate them, that they're glue pods that show and the wall, you cannot finish it nice. So they will have quite a bit of tagboards and then the teaching wall will have the marker board and the projection and the teacher station.
Just to, if you haven't been there lately or recall it, the classrooms have, and Katie mentioned this, the cabinets that they have, the casework they have is in good shape and they have quite a bit of it. If you go in there, the room is actually filled with casework, which made it difficult to find a suitable teaching wall to put up, a marker board, et cetera. So it worked out very well, once the decision was made to actually frame and drywall the, what is currently an accordion or a door or a movable door. And then we're going to put a traditional wood door in there to get through, but it makes for a very nice teaching wall, because it's long, it's empty, and we can get the whiteboards on there. So that's a, that ended up being sort of a win-win between the function of the room as well as then the aesthetics of getting that longer wall to paint and then put the board up on.
Does anyone have questions or comments they'd like to share?
Just like to thank you for taking advantage of the items in the school that did not need replacing, so that we could use our money and make it stretch as far as possible. I mean, even bathrooms and things like that, certainly if we don't have to gut the entire room, it's such a savings. But thank you so much for looking for things like that that we could capitalize on, that we didn't have to go right down to square one on.
And to that end, I'd say that, you know, the team as a whole, between Plant, Moran, Crussa and French, with Katie doing the design, and George Ock Company, everybody was trying to come up with those types of ideas, because we knew that we wanted to be able to have enough here to do what we needed to do. And even, as Katie mentioned, we have a couple of alternates in there that we're hoping to be able to capture if things come in well. So everybody was trying to really figure out, what's the best thing to do, how can we do it the right way, but also have items that still have life in them and maybe breathe a little bit of life in them, like the cabinets that are solid, but giving them a new and fresh countertop that the staff actually, the design team that was made up of teachers and administration chose the color for, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the renovations looks great. I do have a question about the art room. Is there not an art room at Nigieiro or how, what do they do for art?
They use another classroom.
Yes, there's a classroom.
There's a classroom that has a sink.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. That was built, what she was trying to say was that was built originally as an art room, so it has top floor.
Yeah, I do remember that.
So we're going to carpet it, because now they use it for music and it makes more acoustical sense to have a carpet.
Okay, great.
They do have, yes.
Okay, yeah, well, I just wanted to make sure, because it wasn't indicated on the map, but...
Well, it's not indicated, because I don't think that they have decided which of those would be the art room.
Oh, sure.
But if you see like the blue, the light blue color, that is, that's where the sinks are.
Oh, those are rooms with sinks.
Those are rooms with sinks, so one of those will become an art room.
Excellent, thank you, it looks wonderful.
Anything else?
I will say, if at all possible, I think a high priority item for the alternates would be the exterior doors in each classroom. So just to share with you, between the condition of the doors and then that as an egress for students, I'd suggest that the board take a close look at that recommended alternate once we get the pricing in.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, to that effect, one of the other slides is really where we're at with the budget and to that point, I'd like to say, I mean, from what I can tell, we're right on budget right now. All in, this would be hard construction, contingency, any CM costs and fees, you know, we're within $10,000 on $2.7 million right now.
You couldn't get any closer.
We tried to get it closer, but the bottom line is, as Katie mentioned, there are a few alternates and within, within the 2.738, our two alternates, one is, one is the exterior doors and windows package and the second one is, there are some lockers in those little cubbies that go out to the outdoors, that's another alternate. So within that 2.738 is about $150,000 represented by those two items that's in that. So we've identified those as alternates to give us all some wiggle room, because we're not quite sure how the bids will come out. We're bidding early, which is to our benefit, but we're bidding a very consolidated, compressed schedule, which is to our detriment. So we're not quite sure how that will play out, so we wanted to give ourselves a cushion, some flexibility. The third alternate, as we discussed, really the ceiling cassette units, that is not in the 2.738, that's its own thing. But if you look at that and you take the $150,000 into consideration, we're feeling real good about where we're at and we're ready to wrap up the scope and get it out for bids. So I think, I think we're real comfortable with where we're at.
Well, I think this will dramatically change the feel of the school and I think will probably be suit their current needs, maybe a little better, so looking forward to seeing when it's all finished. Anyone else, do you have anything else?
We have a slide left, just showing the schedule. This is, this is what we're sort of laying out currently, knowing that Nigieiro Elementary has a different calendar with regard to end of school, start of school, and you know, our team has been brainstorming on how to capture some time even before the end of the school year. Nigieiro does have a two-week, a full two-week spring break. We're going to be capturing some of that time and doing some work and the school has been, because they, they're excited about this, so they've also been very cooperative and there's a couple of rooms that will be taking over at spring break. Not classrooms, not rooms with students, but a couple of other rooms that we're going to take over at spring break and then sort of keep until the end of the year and start working on them, because we need some way, somehow to capture a little bit of time here and those are some of the ideas.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you for the recap of where we've been.
It's been a good journey.
It's very helpful, it's been a great journey.
I just want to say, it was such a pleasure working with all of you. I'll be sad when we are gone.
Oh.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Katie. It's been wonderful working with you.
Our last item for Building Insight is Item C. It's music equipment purchase, and our presenter this evening is Mr. Willenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Yes, the district is alive with the sounds of music. As we briefly discussed in our study session last week, we are in the final rounds of completing our purchase of elementary music instruments and equipment. With funds from the 2013 bond, the district has made significant investments to enhance the LPS musical world. Thus far, over $1.8 million have been spent to purchase items such as pianos, grand pianos, a variety and multitude of K through 12 instruments, performance shells, risers, performance risers, to name a few of the big end items. Last spring, the Board of Education supported a $98,000 purchase request for K through six classroom instruments. As was explained back then, there were several items that were not bid upon. Thus, and so that's why we're here tonight. Tonight, we're reviewing those rebids. Six vendors responded to the RFP, the Request for Proposal, and all of them, all six submitted partial bids. And that's what's in your packet. The cover sheet shows the six companies and the items that we have awarded. It's broken down vendor by vendor, and the sheets show every item, and the highlighted items, or the darkened items, I should say, on your sheets, are what we accepted. And it's based on lowest bid price through each item. So you can see, and remember, there's a back and a front to each of those vendors. But it comes, you know, and if you follow that cover sheet, you know, it lists Lakeshore Learning Materials for $2,957, Sharp Products for $35,564, University, Universal Melody Services for $573, Washington Music for $3,557, Wanger Corporation for $17,080, and West Music for $14,951. The total cost, then, is $74,684.42. In a few weeks, I will be presenting an additional request for sound systems for each K through 12 music classrooms that aren't included in this request. So, you know, I'm recommending at this time for your, you know, continued review and eventual approval at the next voting meeting, this purchase request for $74,684, $74,684.42. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
Just wanted to double check, did we wind up with, I mean, I looked at all the spreadsheets, and without messing around on an Excel thing myself, did we wind up with adequate coverage for each of the items that we were going out for? Or are there any that we tried to get coverage on this time around, that we still did not have adequate bids on?
The only item would be podiums. And we're gonna have a special purchase for podiums. It'll amount to approximately, it'll be under $10,000 for three large, significant podiums.
Okay. And I just wanted to reinforce to the community again, this is, these are purchases from our bond dollars, and to thank our community so much. We've already been hearing accolades in our schools when we're out, and we have concerts and students using these instruments. But these are instruments that have not been replaced for, some of them 50 years or more. And it was well timed. But thank you so much to our community for supporting these kind of purchases.
Mrs. Burton?
I agree with Mrs. Burton, and I just want to say thank you to the committee that put this together, because there are six different companies, and to really figure out which pieces that you would like from each company, I think, I'm sure a lot of time was spent trying to figure out how you were gonna purchase all these different instruments. And I'm excited for the kids, because they love to go to music class, and one of their favorite things to do is to get out the instruments and play them. So, thank you to the committee for that.
Absolutely. And there is, I want to emphasize, all the music teachers had input in this process, and the lion's share, the bulk of the work, I attribute to our teacher leader in music, Elizabeth Herring, who spent numerous hours reviewing, you know, all the details and specs for these instruments.
Well, you can certainly tell. I mean, that's evident, so thank you.
The separate sheet that I gave you, that's not included in your packet, spells out, gives more detail on what those exact items are, whether they be tambourines, or mallets, the different mallets, or bongos, or cowbells, or eggshakers.
Eggshakers.
You're gonna do a demonstration.
You know, the rhythm sticks get kind of exciting.
Yeah.
The rain stick, you know, is exciting. But you'll see a lot of them in action. Hopefully, we can, by the time the holiday concerts come along, and certainly that little snap at sleigh bells is, you know, is gonna be a little more prominent this year with this purchase.
Great. Yeah, Mrs. Burton?
One other question. You mentioned that the holiday time, if these are approved at our next voting meeting, do we know when we'll begin to expect for delivery?
It's probably a tight timeline to expect that they'll be in by...
I would think so. I would think that would be a threat.
It's a little hopeful, but I'm pretty sure we still have those slapsticks for sleigh bells, so.
Got it.
And plenty of bells that we can ring.
All right. Anyone else? Now, this is quite the eclectic mix, so I'm sure this will be really fun for our students and useful for our teachers. And on that, that concludes Building Insight. Thank you, Mr. Willenberg, and Mr. Johnson, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Thank you, Mr. Willenberg.
We are voting on this on...
Yes. That will then take us to our curriculum committee, Item Four, Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Johnson. We have one item tonight with Mrs. O'Brien to present Everyday Math Journals.
Good evening, thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. This evening, I am bringing a request to purchase Everyday Math Journals for the 2019-20, the 2020 to 21 school year, and the 2021 to 22 school year. So for three years. Typically, we purchase these journals at the end of the school year, over the summer for the following school year. But McGraw-Hill is offering us a discount if we place an order by December. They did this two years ago. And if you bought the following fall, they gave you a percent off. This year, they are actually offering that if you buy three years, you can save up to almost 30%. So we would save $125,178.30 by purchasing three years. So, I've spoken to Ms. Smith, and she would like to budget for this. We would make that savings. Just to remind you, the journals are a part of our Everyday Math program in kindergarten through fifth grade and sixth grade at Webster and Nigiero. It is a part of the curriculum, and it also comes with a three-year subscription to the teacher online portion of Everyday Math. It has a grade book, it has a lesson plan book, and assessments for teachers to use.
Questions or comments? Mrs. O'Brien, just for those who are listening in at home, these math journals are consumable products that we order every year?
Correct. They are part of our programming, and it is a workbook that children write in and take home.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is, that is an amazing, significant savings. So thank you so much again for jumping on it and stretching our dollars.
Thank you, yes.
All right, thank you. We can put this on the voting agenda. Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you.
You are done, Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes, I am done, thank you.
All right, that'll move us on to Item Five, our Policy Committee. Mrs. Burton?
Thank you. We've been going over a number of policies throughout the school year, and thank you so much to the cabinet for diligently continuing to bite off a chunk every month. And we have a number that we're gonna go over this evening. We will turn it over to Mrs. Smith, and take it from there.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. I have four board policies for your review this evening. They're all pretty straightforward, no change in the intent, but just a couple language updates. The first one is currently called Debt Limitation, and I'm recommending we update that to the title of Debt Records, to be more in line with what the meat of the board policy says. And I'm also recommending a small change, swapping out the last couple words from condition of this account to status of outstanding bonds and debts, so that the board policy reads, "It shall be the responsibility of the treasurer of the school district to maintain all records as to the outstanding bonds and debts encumbered against the district. He, she shall keep this information readily available and report periodically to the board on the status of outstanding bonds and debts."
Are there any questions or comments, Ms. Bonfield?
Mrs. Smith, when I'm reading treasurer, I'm reading, we, every year, we vote usually the Director of Finance as the treasurer for the state of Michigan records that we have to have. Is the treasurer on here referring to that person that we elect, or should we change this to say Director of Finance, or something along those lines?
It does refer to the treasurer as in the one that the board appointed, normally at the organizational meeting in July.
Yes.
But if we do want to be more general, instead of Director of Finance, in case titles change, I know one thing we've done is said the superintendent or the superintendent's designee. So maybe swapping that up for the treasurer, I don't know if you, one more thing?
Whatever the board...
For me, I would like to change it, because that person that we vote in as the treasurer is not, doesn't necessarily have to be the Director of Finance. And to put that on that particular person, as opposed to the financial office, I think, I don't know if that would ever happen, but I would like it to say either superintendent or director of finance, or something along those lines, as opposed to treasurer.
I like that change.
Anybody? Are there other thoughts or comments? I agree with you, Mrs. Bonfield. I like putting Director of Finance in there. I don't have a problem putting that title, per se, because there are other places we put the current title, knowing that in the future, that title might change. But we definitely know that it is the Director of Finance, at least at this period, at this point in time. So I don't have a problem changing that to the Director of Finance. Are there other thoughts on that?
I'm fine.
What about the superintendent or the superintendent's designee? Or would you prefer to have it say the Director of Finance?
My personal opinion is, we do know it's the Director of Finance, and it's going to be for the foreseeable future, unless that title changes. I'm fine with that, because we know that is the Director of Finance's responsibility, unless there are other thoughts and opinions.
If that title, if the title ever were to change, it would be easy enough to do a global search and find it, as opposed to having to do a global search on superintendent and his or her designee.
That's very true. That appears multiple times.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, so we're gonna be proposing changing the responsibility of the treasurer of the school district. Instead, we will be saying the Director of Finance. Do we want to say of the school district?
Yes.
Okay. So just omit treasurer and change that to Director of Finance. So it'll read, "It shall be the responsibility of the Director of Finance of the school district."
I can make that change, and if it's, if you bring this for a first reading at our regular board meeting?
Yes, please. Are we all all right with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have Board Policy DFD entitled Bond Sales. And this is, again, a simple language change from the word people to community, so that the board policy reads, "The Board of Education, upon a favorable vote of the community in compliance with the law, may sell its bonds. Such bonds shall be duly advertised, prepared, and sold in conformance with the law."
Any comments or questions, Ms.? Seems pretty logical. Let's go from there.
Next policy is DFE, and I'm proposing a name change from short-term notes to short-term loans, to be consistent with the reference in the board policy. And then within the policy, just a simple word swap from the word bid to terms, so that this board policy reads, "Bids shall be solicited for all short-term loans which the Board of Education authorized, and funds shall be borrowed from the responsible organization offering the lowest acceptable terms. All loans shall conform with the requirements of law."
Any comments or questions, Ms.?
Nope.
Yep.
And the last board policy I have for you is Board Policy JNA. And during our study session, we went over the administrative procedures, and we, you know, touched upon these board policy. And tonight, just bringing forward kind of a formal recognition that this board policy has been reviewed, and despite being written a number of years ago, still is very applicable as written. And then the proposed change on the administrative procedures is changing the word Board of Education, or the group Board of Education, and changing it to the superintendent or superintendent's designee. So I'll just read the first part of the board policy, or the administrative procedures. It would read, "The James P. Carley Memorial Scholarship Fund will be administered as follows. The superintendent or the superintendent's designee shall determine the amount of money, if any, is available to be provided for scholarships under this fund." And what we're looking to do here is align the administrative procedures with today's practice.
Okay. Are there comments or questions on this policy? Just, Mr. Johnson?
I'm just wondering, in the first sentence where we say the James P. Carley Memorial Scholarship Fund would be administered as follows, perhaps we should change that to "will be"?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Good suggestion. Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
With Allison, with Mrs. Smith, we're gonna do DE, DFD, and DFE are gonna be first readings. And JNA is just an FYI, since we're not changing anything, and it's just the admin policy, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one other question. Under number seven, sub-fund, we have more than one such scholarship in the district, don't we?
We keep, I think it's referring to as a sub-fund, it's sub of our general fund, so these are kept in a separate fund, our scholarship fund.
Right.
To date, we're only receipt, that could change, but we are receiving funds for the Carley Memorial Foundation. We aren't getting any currently that we're putting into that fund. But that's what I think it's referring to, or how I take it as, for the sub-fund.
Okay, like, so there are not other scholarships that the district holds?
Not currently, but if there were to be future scholarship funds established, it would be established within this sub-fund. So we would keep track of the different types of funds, so that we can report out on them correctly, where the source of the funds are coming from.
And since it only talks about just this one scholarship, I just want to make sure that this is the only one that we are holding in this manner?
It is.
Okay, all right. And again, for the benefit of the public that may not have this entire board policy in front of them, this is not a publicly funded scholarship. This is money that has been donated by, I believe, the family of James Carley, and it's used for scholarship. But it's, the district holds it and distributes it as is appropriate, which is described in detail in this policy.
That's correct.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. Just looking at Item Seven, and this is just me being fussy. When we look at the, "In memory of Mr. James P. Carley, the late superintendent of schools, of Levonia Public Schools," it may be because this was originally worded in 1989, but that sounds like he is recently deceased, as opposed to saying, "In memory of the late Mr. James P. Carley, a former superintendent of schools." Because it has been several years since, in fact, he died, rather than making it feel like we recently lost him.
So can you repeat the language again that you're proposing?
Starting in the end of that second line, "The fund received in memory of the late Mr. James P. Carley, a former superintendent of schools."
I don't have a problem with the other way, Mrs. Brad...
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, sorry. A former superintendent of Levonia Public Schools, right? We could say, yes, take out the of schools.
You wouldn't have that school district in there, right? Just a former superintendent of Levonia Public Schools.
So we can take out that of schools and move the late, make it a former...
Does that sound right?
So it would receive, funds received in memory of the late Mr. So it would receive, funds received in memory of the late Mr. James P. Carley, a former Superintendent of?
Livonia Public.
Of Livonia Public School, School District? Is that what you're proposing?
Much more clear.
So we'll change that to a first reading?
Sounds good.
A first reading.
Any other thoughts or comments on this policy? Nope.
And yes, right, so it is a first reading, and we would not take any action on the administrative procedure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And the next policy on our list tonight is Board Policy IFA, District Technology Network and Related Resources.
Hello again. I am bringing Board Policy IFA. We went through this at study session.
I'm sorry, may I just pop in just for a moment? I'm rereading number seven from the prior policy. I'm not entirely comfortable with the wording of a former Superintendent. That just sounds a bit removed. And so I, could we perhaps, if Mrs. Jarvis is recommending that late precede Mr. Carley's name, "In memory of the late Mr. James P. Carley," I would suggest we put Superintendent of Livonia Public Schools during, and then put the dates of his, his service. So that, that, it just feels like perhaps a more appropriate reference, rather than saying a former. Still meet the intent of?
Yep.
Actually, it even takes it one step further, makes it more clear.
Sure.
Sorry, Mrs. O'Brien, we popped in.
No, that's okay. That's what board policy revisions are all about. So IFA. So at study session, we went through the board policy and the administrative procedures. There are several. If we just want to quickly walk through the board policy, we reviewed, and we felt that it was good as it was, was written in 2014. The first administrative procedure was on software copyright, and we just added that copyright law was updated again in 2016. And we changed the titles in the last paragraph to the Administrator of Information and Instructional Technology and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and District Services. IFA I administrative procedure is the Student LiveNet access policy. We added using their own personal devices or a district device. We also added accessing, accessing the district accessed in the past, past tense. We removed the exhibit for IFA I. Administrative procedure, IFA II. We, this is the Staff LiveNet access policy. We added professional growth as, to the wording, and that the use of LiveNet includes limited access to the Internet using personal or district device, same as the student LiveNet. Also added the word accessed. And in G, 3G, added images or audio/video files as inappropriate uses of LiveNet. And then also in the asterisk end paragraph, we also added personal devices used to access the Internet, which matched the opening paragraph. IFA III administrative procedure was the Guest Network. We did not make changes to this. This was written in 2014 and felt that it stood the test of time for the past four years. And the last one, IFA IV. This one, we spent some time on. We made some changes to the webpages description under E. Sites created by others but linked to our site are required to be shared with the school administrator, yeah, are required to be shared with school administrator, along with having login credentials. I think it should be along, along with having login credentials. We removed A and B from the next section, and C will actually be a part of Roman numeral one, but we didn't make any changes to that. Three stands. Four, we rewrote. Authorization to use photographs, videos, and audio clips of students and student work in any format to post on a teacher's, school, or district website, using a student's first name only, is provided each year on the school's students' emergency card. Recognizing that some parents and guardians wish to restrict their student's name, image, or work from being used on the district website, we offer an opt-out form. This form is provided to parents at registration and is kept on file. Parents and guardians can change the restrictions at any time by coming to the school office and revising and/or rescinding the opt-out form. Are we good? So five, we removed. And then we removed A from six and part of B. We may, we remove from school website, webpage committee, A and B, we just left. Only designated persons will be authorized to access the district web server and update it and the school's website, including webpages or other approved school-related groups. Other approved school-related group stands. Content for the webpage, we changed F, newsletters, and we added other electronic communications such as blogs. And J and K, we added school and district webpages should be reviewed regularly and kept current, and should be edited for spelling and grammatical errors. And lastly, we added website accessibility. We added the language that states, "Webpages will conform to industry, industry standards for Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA compliance." And B, building administrators and staff who update or post to the website must have access to ADA compliance training materials. And lastly, we're removing the last two exhibits. IFA V and VI.
So one policy and a lot of administrative procedures. Mrs. Jarvis?
Me being fussy again.
That's okay.
Item nine F, instead of IE, I believe you're looking for EG, which would mean, for example, IE means that is, and I think you want more than just blogs.
You are correct. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on these?
This is all just FYI.
Correct. This is FYI because the board does not vote on administrative procedures.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next policy is Board Policy GAMA, Alcohol and Drug Abuse. And we'll be hearing from Mr. Archibald.
Passing around the most recent, recent version.
This is even bigger and better?
This is better. It is. All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
You may recall, if you've seen this policy before, that we had talked about it at a previous study session, and then before bringing it forward to the committee of the whole meeting. Last month, we agreed to wait and see the outcome of the Prop Two. Ballot, Prop One? Thank you. Prop One, ballot issue. And so then we revised our policy accordingly. So with Board Policy GAMA, which is alcohol and drug abuse, there are no changes to side one, other than an editorial correction there in the first paragraph. But if you flip it over, and I'll work backwards, at the very bottom, near the bottom, there's a reference to a current list of available drug counseling, rehabilitation, and employee assistance programs. We're recommending to strike that language. The district currently provides an employee assistance program utilizing Reliance, and that is available to all employees and eligible family members. And therefore, because we do that, we do not maintain that list as stated here. But again, we do provide the employee assistance program, so we recommend that we strike that language. The paragraph above that, those are simply editorial changes to make it flow better grammatically. And then the paragraph above that, where it mentions a drug-free awareness program, that program does not exist, nor could I even tell you the last time that it was in existence, to be very candid. So again, we would recommend striking that. And I'll reference, again, the employee assistance program that we have through Reliance, in which we make information and materials available to all employees in a variety of formats, including sharing their regular newsletter that they, that they provide to us. Then if you move up, again, specific to marijuana use, there were a plethora of, I won't say legal opinions, but documentations out of law offices and so forth regarding the effects or the impact of Prop One on employers. And essentially, and boiling it all down, nothing changed with respect to employers' rights and ability to set policy for drug-free workplaces. And so what we have put here, even though nothing really has changed, is again marijuana use possession being under the influence of is still against the law, against the federal law. We thought to put some language in here would provide, remove any ambiguity or uncertainty and provide something specific. So essentially, we're treating marijuana, according to this policy, in a very similar manner as we are alcohol. And it'd be treated very similarly. It's, so as such, employees may not bring alcohol, marijuana, or unlawful drugs into school buildings or onto work sites at any time, or use, consume, or be under the influence of alcohol, marijuana, or unlawful drugs while on school property during their work hours or in attendance at school events. So we feel that that reflects what we want to have in our, in our school district, and again removes any uncertainty or ambiguity regarding what was passed recently.
Do we want to consider, Mr. Archibald, it says, "While on school property during their work hours or in attendance at school events." Do we want to say, or acting in the capacity, in their capacity as an agent of the district? There may be a situation where they may be attending an event that is not a school event, but they're doing so in the capacity and their role as an agent of the district? Just so that we don't get caught up in any semantics?
Can I add to that? I would just end that, well, so originally, I was going to say, I would just end that sentence, "While on school property." And just, if they're on school property, they, just, it's, it doesn't matter what they're doing, instead of saying while it's work hours or attendance at school events, just say while they're on the property, and then add the, or as acting as an agent.
We occasionally have events that are not on school property.
But that's what the agents' part is. Oh, oh, during their work hours or in attendance, okay.
Do you need to have during their work hours? I agree. Wouldn't you just have, strike that out of there, because anytime they're on the school property?
Right.
Like Mrs. Bonfield says.
Yeah, but I take, I understand Liz's point, is that it's not only when they're on property, but then does Mrs. Oquist, Superintendent Oquist's, or as acting as an agent of the district cover the, during work hours but not on the property issue?
Well, for example, last year, when Churchill's Performing Arts Center was under construction, we had our concerts elsewhere.
I understand, but does that, does the, does Mrs. Oquist's?
While acting as an agent would cover?
Or acting as agents of the district cover the?
Offsite.
We're having our?
Out of school hours.
I would, just from a legal standpoint, an agent is a very specific legal term that may be limited to that person's specific. Not skill, but their, their specific responsibility. I think if you, that could be construed very narrowly. Representative would be perhaps a better word.
While acting?
Could we say while acting in their capacity as an employee of the school district?
I think that would probably...
This would only apply if they were?
If they're acting within the course and scope of their employment. I would think as an employee would probably be even better.
Could you repeat that, Mr. Johnson?
I don't think so. Instead of using the term agent, I think just acting.
While acting in their capacity as an employee of the district.
I would still suggest, I, I agree with that, but I still, as a separate issue, would go back to suggesting that we strike during their work hours, because it's not permissible, I don't believe, at any time to be under the influence of alcohol, marijuana, or other illegal drugs, even if they came to school after school at nine o'clock at night, if they're messing around on the football field. That's not permissible either. I mean, to be under the influence at that time. I'm just suggesting striking during their work hours. It's not permissible, period.
So let me just think that through, because let's say alcohol is, is legal. If someone, if we're saying while on school property, and in this case, not acting in their capacity as an employee, are we saying if someone went and had dinner, had a drink, and then at, you know, two hours later, came, it was, no, it was on the school property, not at a school event? This would be saying on the school property. That, that would be illegal. I, I don't know that we have that purview to say, they can't, let's say, be sitting in the parking lot of one of our schools.
Are we not a drug-free zone? Does that have a time limit?
But, well...
They're not consuming it on the property, is what you're saying.
And it does say, "Under the influence." So in, in that scenario, if you go to dinner, if you have just one, you may not fall under the policy. If you have three or four, that renders you under the influence, then you would be.
I would go with, we're trying to set examples for our students. I mean, I, I don't know how far under the influence goes, but I certainly, at any time of the day, don't want to see, you know, one of our employees stumbling across the parking lot or throwing up in a trash can. It just, I don't think that's a good, it's the same thing. I would never go to work after, I wouldn't go to my office after hours and show up drunk in my office, you know?
Of course, I, I would a thousand percent agree with, with that for any, any, any of our, any of our staff.
I think on the, on the front side, we, we cover, under the bullets, some of those types of behaviors, that you're talking about, school district employees are role models for students, and as such, employees should demonstrate exemplary behavior. My, my question would be, I think Mrs. Oquist was going there, is to how far-reaching can our policy be with respect to regulating their conduct when they're an employee and when they're not? Even though it would be inappropriate in, in the eyes of, of most of us to, you know, get liquored up and show up at a school event, whether you're, you know, and you're not working it, you're just coming there to be social, we would deem that to be inappropriate and not a good role model. To what extent can we regulate that as an employee? Would be something I'd want to explore.
You know what, though? I think that we should take out during their work hours. I mean, we certainly don't, we, we have quite strong policy against students being under the influence. I don't think it's the intention of this group to permit employees to be under the influence at, at events. And I agree that we cannot control, nor should we try to control, what folks are doing outside of their work. But this says, "Employees may not bring alcohol, marijuana, or unlawful drugs into school buildings or onto, onto work sites at any time, use, consume, or be under the influence of alcohol, marijuana, or unlawful drugs while on school property." Right now, it says during their work hours or in attendance at school events. I think taking during their work hours out... I think taking during their work hours out is not in any way reaching into what folks are doing in their private lives. They're just saying that you may not, going back to the beginning of this statement, you may not bring alcohol, marijuana, or unlawful drugs into our buildings or onto our work sites. You can't use it, consume it, or be under the influence of it while on school property or at school events. I personally am, am comfortable with that, because I think during their work hours leaves some ambiguity as to when you can show up under the influence. We're not saying you can't have a, a glass of wine and then go to your child's play, you know, an hour later, but we're saying you can't be under the influence in our buildings or on our property. Mr. Senators and Mrs. Jarvis.
So is under the influence a, a legal term, though? Because I think you could technically be under the influence of alcohol under a couple steps, right? Because it could immediately start affecting. So is it, does it mean the same as intoxicated? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand what you're saying, and I think we need the, the legal definition of under the influence, then.
Right.
So that we all make sure that we're talking about the same thing.
Sure.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I agree with what you're saying about striking during working hours, because it occurs to me that it would be easy to say, well, this is, you know, I'm, I'm a kindergarten teacher and I'm at a football game, and I don't, I'm not the, I'm not related to a football game, and so I'm exempt. And if you strike that during their work hours, then that covers that exemption, that loophole.
Okay. Mrs. Bradford.
I'm going to play a little bit of the devil's advocate during their work hours. If you were a kindergarten teacher or parent coming in, that's your parent role, and you happen to be on the school property under the influence, does that give the district the right to discipline you for doing that? I mean, or, or possibly firing you for that? I'm just saying, you come, you're as, you're a parent now, watching your son's football game, and you've had a couple drinks, and you supposedly might be under the influence. Does that give the district the right to say that you're going to be put on leave? You're in a different capacity. You're coming in as a parent, not as a, not as a, you're not, you're off-hours. You're coming in as a parent, so would, would the district have the right to impose an infraction on that, on that teacher? I don't think so.
I would hope that we do.
I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, if I, if that were to happen, you could get into a, a problem with that. You're saying you're going to discipline that teacher for coming as a parent. I mean, a teacher could say, I'm here as a, in a capacity of a parent. I'm not saying that's a justification for the behavior, however, you are there, not on the role as a teacher, you are there as a parent. And I think, I don't know about that.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
I'm going to go back to my work scenario. You know, I can absolutely see, you know, we know, we do a lot of work for a lot of businesses in town, and I can totally see if I went out and was very obnoxious or created a scene that I would, is not representing, representing my company appropriately, that any of us could be reprimanded anywhere for our jobs for not acting appropriately. So I'm, I'm not sure if, I would say it would be unacceptable as a teacher to go to a football game.
I agree.
And be intoxicated, and that, that would be cause for some kind of, I don't know if disciplinary action is the right term, but some, you know, that it's just inappropriate and that they would be called on the carpet for that. And so, and I want to go, I know we've talked about during their work hours, but for me, I would also strike in attendance at school events and change it to what we talked about, or acting as a, not as an agent, or in the capacity of, as an employee, rather than in attendance at school events. And can we, can I make another suggestion? This is something that, this, I mean, we're, we're sort of playing with semantics here. Is this something that we can maybe come up with a wording that we're all pretty much on the same page with, send it back? Mr. Archibald can look into it, or we can run it past the attorney or whatever, and then we can maybe bring it to another committee meeting so that we can talk about it a little bit more.
Of course.
So we don't have to, like, come to a final conclusion.
Of course.
Tonight. So if we can come up maybe with some wording that we're all comfortable with, but maybe not a hundred percent.
Of course.
Woo-hoo about, then, and then we can have it revised and review, reviewed and revised, and then we can chat about it again.
I think it's a good idea.
That was exactly what I was going to say. We could go around and around on this, but until we know our rights as an employer to enforce this or not to, I think we're just kind of spinning our wheels.
And I apologize for not having any answer to that. I was focused on the implementing the marijuana piece into it, which we seem to have covered well, but we still have some other questions. So if I can just review the, what I understand is kind of the three outstanding questions in that sentence. Clarification on, on a quote-unquote definition of under the influence, rewording or in attendance at school events to something to the effect of in the employee's capacity with the school district, and there's question with respect to during their work hours and whether that can be stricken or not, and what's the full scope of our latitude in being able to, I'll say, hold some accountable for being, for violating that in a capacity that might otherwise be outside of that. Okay, is that the?
I think so.
Mr. Archibald, I would like to add also, when, with, if we're talking about.
You can't, that's three questions.
I know. We've hit our max. On school property or in school vehicles. I mean, for example, on school, in school buses, in school-owned vehicles.
On her in.
On her, yeah, on her in school property. I, I still think that we ought to, I would like to see what our, what our attorneys suggest about at-school events, because I do agree that we have school events that are off-site, off of our property. I don't necessarily think we should take at-school event, in attendance at school events out, because we have off-site events. But I'm more than happy to turn this over to our legal folks, who I'm sure, we aren't the first one in line to say, hey, what do we do with some of this now?
I'd be happy to take, to work with them and bring a revision back to you.
And, let me see here. I had one other question also, if we drop down to the next paragraph. Oh, halfway down the next paragraph, the unlawful possession, use, sale, manufacture, distribution, or dispensa.
Dispensation.
Dispensation of alcohol, I'd like to suggest that we add or marijuana.
Or, or unlawful drugs.
Yes, alcohol, marijuana, or unlawful, or unlawful drugs. Any of the three. And that's just to stay consistent with the wording that we find throughout this policy.
Nice, Judge.
We may want to do the same, if we go back to the first page, the first bullet point, we talk about controlled, let me see. Talk about alcohol, we want to say, or, we may want to say, or marijuana. Talk about the use, possession, sale, or other activities involving illegal drugs. I, I suggest we may want to put a comma there, right after the word illegal drug, after drugs of illegal drugs, and abuse of other controlled substances, or alcohol, or marijuana. I would suggest we add or marijuana, is inconsistent. Again, if we're trying to incorporate marijuana and treat it as alcohol right now.
So there's probably a couple other places in there that Mr. Archibald might catch and add those.
I don't know, I didn't catch the couple that pointed out, but I will do my best to revise it accordingly and bring it back to you.
Okay, and I'm just, I'm marking this down, just sending it back to the committee.
Yep, frequently, after one committee of the whole, we are ready to vote, or ready to take it to a first reading. This is complicated enough in our society, let alone our, you know, our, our one little policy here, that I'm not surprised that we need to, I would rather that we work on it for a while and get it right.
Well, and this is a lot of, not that policies don't, but this is specifically impacting a lot of people on some.
It's new to our society, so I'd rather, yeah.
Pretty, crazy issues, yeah.
Yep. That's something I anticipated several years ago, doing on schoolwork, but here we are. Is there any other comments or questions regarding this policy before Mr. Archibald runs it by several folks, and we'll all talk about it again? Nothing else? Okay. President Johnson, that concludes policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. That will take us to item six, Finance Committee, Mrs. Bonnefield.
President Johnson, I do not have anything tonight. Superintendent Oquist?
We do not, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Then that will take me to, take us to item seven, Personnel Committee, Mrs. Frank.
Nothing, Mrs. Oquist?
We do not, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you. And lastly, we'll go to item eight, Mrs. Bradford, Legislative.
President Johnson, we do not have anything tonight, except just to say we are in lame duck session, which will go until December 31st, I believe, and there are some pertinent things on the table, so if you can go on the, there's a website, you can go on the Michigan Legislative website, you can look at some of the, the things that are on the table, and you can maybe reflect on them, but we don't know what's really going to happen, because they go quickly. So I guess we'll continue to keep an eye on them. Mrs. Oquist, do you want to keep us updated?
We will, absolutely.
On anything that's in, on the table right now.
We will. And just a brief thank you to those at our table in our community who were willing to put themselves out there to serve our school district, and we'd like to congratulate President Burton, Vice President, President Johnson, Vice President Burton, and Trustee Jarvis for their reelection to the Board of Education in our election last week. We're thrilled to have you continue to serve the students, the staff, and the schools of our district for another four years. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and it's our pleasure.
Thank you. It's our honor to serve. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda, and if there's nothing else, we're done. Thank you.